Good evening, everyone. In compliance with Chapter 551, Open Meetings of the Texas Government Code, I call to order a regular voting meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, January 26, 2023, at 6:03 PM. A quorum of the board is physically present at the AISD Central Office to conduct this meeting. Board meetings are open to the public based on space availability to ensure social distancing and the health and safety of our community and staff. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on cable channel 22 through Spectrum, Astound Broadband, and on channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. To our audience tuning in remotely and here in person, welcome and thank you for joining us. We will move to the approval of the agenda. Secretary Boswell, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Zapata to approve the agenda, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Great, the motion passes unanimously. Secretary Boswell, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the Pledge to the Texas Flag?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We will now move to our game changer items, which is our opportunity to recognize and observe important items happening in AISD and in our nation. Mr. Segura, would you please share our recognitions?
Thank you, President Singh. I would like to ask Michelle Wallace, Executive Director for Innovation and Development, to share our partner recognition.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Segura, President Singh, and trustees. Thank you for your service. I am here tonight to ask for formal recognition of Indeed. In addition to the support of Families as Partners that you'll hear about in a moment, Indeed is working nationally to support school districts in recruiting and hiring educators and support personnel. And I'm excited to share that Indeed is piloting this work in AISD with our Human Capital team. We're grateful to the Indeed team, especially our local contacts, Paula and Parissa, and to Chief Hosack and Mr. Gutierrez, Assistant Superintendent of Human Capital Systems, for engaging in this partnership. Trustees, at this time, it is my pleasure to request formal recognition of Indeed.
Thank you so much, Ms. Wallace. Trustee Zapata, do you have a recognition statement to share?
Indeed, I do.
Someone had to do it.
Well, I'm honored to be able to do this recognition because I could work closely in the community with Indeed. So on behalf of the Austin AISD Board of Trustees, it is my honor to recognize, I'm sorry, to recognize Indeed for their support and commitment to Austin AISD students. And Indeed's mission is to help all people get jobs, including people who face barriers. As part of the Essentials to Work Program, Indeed has provided over 50 Wi-Fi hotspots and 100 laptops to every Parent Champion in Austin AISD's Families as Partners Program. Additionally, Indeed volunteers attended the Parent Champion Winter Recognition Celebration event. Families as Partners, FAP, fosters and strengthens relationships with families by cultivating trust and building collaborative and equity-focused partnerships between schools and communities and communities. The program provides support and learning opportunities for caregivers and staff at 21 participating AISD schools. Through Indeed's support, Parent Champions will be able to take advantage of the learning opportunities around computer skills and literacy, resume writing, job search, and financial wealth. This type of partnership is to be commended. It is with great pride that the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District recognize and thank Indeed for their partnership and support of Austin AISD students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Trustee Zapata, I'm reminded of the, you were around and involved at the beginning of Families as Partners, too, and thank you for that support. A special shout out to Maria Rosas, who runs that program and is an incredible human. So thank you all for the recognition.
All right, thank you.
Kevin Clark.
Great. So you can probably tell by all the beautiful decorations around the room, it is Board Appreciation Month, and I think I speak on behalf of the board to say we all feel very appreciated today. So thank you all. These signs are adorable. Kevin Foster made sure that this sign was front and center, just FYI. All right, so before I turn it to, turn it over to the interim superintendent, I would like to take a moment on behalf of the board to thank all, to thank all the staff who support trustees in their daily work and for our meetings. As many of you know, a trustee is an unpaid elected position in Texas. These staff assist trustees with preparing our meetings, connecting us with district resources, and ensuring trustees can remain focused on our governance role to advocate for all of Austin students. First, I want to thank Laura Orozco, the Board Secretary, who does the job of nine people truly, by supporting each and every board member with schedules, training, preparation, and meetings. And you always do it with a smile, and we really, really appreciate it. We also want to thank Elsa Perez, Frances Solis, and Stephanie McGraw, whom all help support this work every single day and during board meetings. We want to thank Austin AISD TV, hi guys, who support the recording and broadcasting of board meetings. Thank you to Daniel Ardis, Waha Rasuli, and all the part-time AISD staff who work our meetings. A big thanks to our building manager, Armando Jaramillo, and our lead custodian, Delia Vera, and all the custodians who ensure our room is set up for each meeting and that our building is clean and welcoming to our community. Can't forget to thank our AISD police, who always have a presence at our board meetings. And it's very fitting that the person who wrote my script did not include his name, and that is Dr. Jacob Reach. Jacob, we adore you, and we really appreciate all that you do for us. Thank you. There are so many more people we could thank, so on behalf of the board, thank you to all AISD staff for your support, of trustees, and of the students of Austin AISD. Thank you. Mr. Segura?
Yes.
Well, thank you, President Singh. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize all of our trustees. We have an awesome, amazing board and excited to work alongside you. Our trustees, who are elected officials, are also full-time volunteers in service to our students, staff, and community. They give countless hours, and I can, I can promise you they are countless hours, to the district, not only at board meetings, but also board workshops and retreats, when we had this past Saturday, and they are invited to many school and district events. They can also be seen at the legislature advocating on our behalf, attending trainings as well as conferences. Trustees also respond to phone calls, emails, and texts from parents, staff, and community members. We appreciate your dedication, your time, and commitment to the district. We are ever so grateful for your service. Several of our schools have sent small gifts, and we have baskets for each of you to take home. I want to also point out the signs created by our students, which are put up around the boardroom today. They are amazing, especially that one with Trustee Foster's name on it. I would like to ask if Austin AISD TV could also zoom in on some of the signs. The Texas Association of School Boards has set the theme for this recognition as "Forward Together." I believe this really captures the work we are doing right here and now. This district will be more successful than ever when our families, teachers, students, leaders, community members, partners, and trustees work together for what is best for Austin students. I will close with a brief video from Navarro students. AISD, could we please play that?
The Navarro Education and Training Program.
Thank you from the Navarro Health Science.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. That's really cute. All right, our next items are under the president's report. So as Mr. Segura just mentioned, last Saturday, the Board of Trustees met in a retreat to discuss our work as a new board, and we spent that time sharing what makes an effective school board and what we have learned these last two months and what we want to see moving forward. At this meeting, the board also took up an action on residential placement agreement that was previously shared and discussed at our board information session. Due to an urgent need to provide placement for the student, the administration requested approval of the agreement to provide an earlier start date for the student. And so for that reason, the agreement is no longer on the agenda tonight. Most of the discussion at the retreat was focused on prioritizing a thoughtful and participatory approach to equitable budgeting for the next school year. And trustees really discussed all sorts of budget priorities that took part in an exercise using Thought Exchange, which is an online and interactive platform being used at community budget discussions to share budget goals and provide feedback.
So, speaking of the community budget discussions, we also want to remind our staff and families about upcoming opportunities to learn more about budget priorities and be involved in sharing feedback for next year's budget. The district has two in-person meetings scheduled for February. The first will be Wednesday, February 1st, at Austin High, and then Wednesday, February 8th, at Eastside Early College High. Both meetings will be at 6:00 and offered in English and Spanish. A virtual session will also be offered on Wednesday, February 22nd, with English from 12:00 to 1:00 and Spanish from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. You can learn more about these meetings on the Austin AISD calendar at austinisd.org/calendar.
Well, normally in January, the district provides an annual report for Austin AISD, which includes information and data about Austin AISD, including data from the Texas Academic Performance Report for the previous school year. This year, the state has not yet released data on CCMR outcomes bonus, and that stands for college career military readiness, which is a part of this report. So the district will move this presentation from our normal time, which would have been tonight, to our February meeting. Please join us for our February meeting, where we will not only go through the district's annual report, but also share a scorecard update on our CCMR indicators. Our next item is under the Superintendent Transition Update, and tonight, the board is scheduled to approve a firm to help with the superintendent search. This work is really important, as a firm can assist trustees in reaching out to candidates that would be reflective of AISD's values and review and screen interested candidates. The firm will also be responsible for assisting the board with developing a profile that is reflective of the community voice and student-centered. We've gotten a lot of feedback from community members in the last year or two on this topic, knowing that this was coming, and we really appreciate that. Prior to the approval of this item tonight, there will be an opportunity for our trustee committee to share their feedback. And for this report, we would like to ask trustee Nolita Lugo, if she can provide a committee report update on what the group has accomplished these past two weeks. Trustee Lugo.
Great, thank you. I'm going to do part of this in English and part in Spanish, so if the reporter from Telemundo is watching, I, I was in my English brain during the interview, so hopefully this will make up for it. So I do want to revisit why a superintendent search firm, because this is an investment on behalf of the district, for the district. And as President Singh mentioned, you know, really us having a, an executive search firm, specifically a superintendent search firm, gives us access to a far more expansive and growing pipeline of potential candidates. So not just current superintendents, but others who may not have otherwise known of the position, but can be recruited. A search firm draws from their industry, from their expertise about the role, about the function of school districts and superintendents, and really helps us attract the best candidates and ultimately helps us secure the best-fit candidate who understands our district, our community, and the person will be committed to AISD, seeing us for all that we do well, as well as all that we must do better. Okay. Porque una empresa de búsqueda, primero acceso a una cartera expansiva y en constante crecimiento de candidatos potenciales, dos extraer de su industria, función, experiencia en posiciones. La empresa nos va a ayudar a atraer a los mejores candidatos y asegurar al candidato más adecuado que entienda nuestro, nuestro distrito, comunidad, y esté comprometido con el distrito escolar, con nos, que nos vea por todo lo que hacemos bien y todo lo que debemos hacer mejor. So please know that each of us on the Proposal Review Committee, which included trustees, Boswell, Hunter, Gonzalez, and myself, please know that each of us on the review committee understand the weight of this selection, finding the right firm, rolling out an authentic, meaningful community engagement, so that we can create the right superintendent job profile, and conducting a superintendent search that is transparent and rigorous. Tenga en cuenta que cada uno de nosotros en el comité de revisión de propuestas comprende el peso de esta selección. Uno, encontrar la empresa adecuada. Dos, implementar una participación comunitaria auténtica y significativa para que podemos crear un perfil de trabajo de superintendiente. Y tercero, realizar una búsqueda de superintendiente que sea transparente y rigurosa. So over the last few weeks, the committee reviewed five proposals, invited three firms to oral presentations, invited two firms to a second meeting, called references for each of the top two firms, and then made our selection on January, January 23rd. Durante las últimas semanas, el comité revisió cinco propuestas, invitió a tres firmas o empresas a presentaciones orales, luego invitamos a dos empresas a una segunda reunión, pedimos múltiples referencias para cada una de los dos empresas principales, y luego hicimos nuestra selección el 23 de enero. And with that, do I name the search firm, or is that later?
I think we'll do that a little later.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I mean, it is, it is on board docs. So if you want to say, if you're feeling it, I have no problem with it.
Está bien, presidente. No, it's fine.
Thank you. All right, so at this time, we would like to, by the way, I want to thank the committee. You guys put in so many hours, I know. And who all was on this committee again? Hunter, Gonzalez, Secretary Boswell, and myself. Wow, thank you. Really, I know that you guys, it sounded like you had three meetings and multiple phone calls. I'm sure it took many, many hours in a week where we were doing lots of other stuff, so it's very appreciated. So at this time, we would like to have trustees provide committee reports. So trustee Whitley Chu, who was recently named as the board's delegate to the Austin Ed Fund, you'll provide a report for the Ed Fund, so go ahead.
Yes, thank you so much. I am so excited to serve as President Singh's designate on the Austin Ed Fund Board. I had the opportunity to meet with the board. The board met on January 19th for its annual meeting. We, in addition to welcoming three new board members, the board welcomed me and interim superintendent, Matias Segura, to the board. The committees provided updates, and the board heard a report from Mr. Segura and an update on Austin AISD's legislative priorities from the Director of Intergovernmental Relations, Edna Butts. And I want to let the community know that the Austin Ed Fund will participate and amplify Austin, and that's Austin's CommunitiWide Day of Giving on March 2nd. If you're interested in signing up as a fundraiser to encourage our community to support AISD, please email Michelle at Michelle dot Wallace at austinisd.org. Donations support the Ed Fund's mission and include the Annual Teacher Grants Program and the Crisis Fund benefiting AISD students, staff, and families.
Thank you so much. Trustees, are there any committee or training reports to share tonight? Okay. Well, we want to let the public know that all trustee committees have been filed with new appointments, and we have scheduled upcoming meetings for the month of February with our Intergovernmental and Audit Committee meeting next week, and our Policy Committee meeting is confirming a time next week. And tonight, the board will also consider voting on a new Ad-Hoc Committee for Special Education, which, if approved, would include myself, trustee Foster, trustee Boswell, and trustee Whitley Chu. This committee would be charged with supporting the district's efforts around special education to ensure all students receive the support and accommodations needed to provide governance over the need of students with disabilities in AISD and ensure our policies and procedures are aligned to support students and staff. This is a really important committee. It's something that we discussed almost as soon as this new board got placed, and really looking forward to working with the administration as we address some of the longstanding issues in special education. So thank you to all the members of that committee. Also, as a reminder, the Board of Trustees approved a new Advocacy Advisory Committee. It's a new district advisory body, similar to the, to the DAC, which is the District Advisory Committee, and the School Health Advisory Committee, and others. The goal is to bring help, bring together a diverse mix of people from across the district, both internal and in the larger community, to help the board inform and amplify the district's advocacy of the adopted priorities. And everyone who's interested, even those who have been appointed by board members, should fill out an application, which is available in English and Spanish. Our first meeting will be on February 1st from 5:30 to 7:30 at AISD HQ, right here, and our second will be on March 29th at the Capitol, most likely from 11:00 to 1:00. And you can learn more and complete an application at www.austinisd.org/ advisory-bodies. And I want to thank Secretary Boswell for, this is your, your brainchild, so thank you so much for taking the time and working with Stephanie McGraw and others to put this together. All right, the next item is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Singh. We have a presentation. This is my first interim superintendent's report, so very excited to do it. It is my last of firsts in a little period of time. One of the things that I certainly am very excited about is, there have been many firsts over the last couple of weeks, you know, first meeting with principals, the first meeting with our district leadership team, the first meeting with the Principals Advisory Committee, our first board meeting, our first board retreat, and today, certainly, a last first, which is the first interim superintendent's report. So very excited to give it. The first thing I'd like to say is, one of the things that we've been communicating time and time again is that this time, this period that we are here leading this organization together, it's about stability. It's about supporting our organization in a meaningful way. And I'm quick to say that stability does not mean being static and just sitting idly by and allowing things to occur. There is tremendous amount of work. We have hit the ground running, and our organization is, I think, well poised to do some incredible things over the next several months, and we're very excited about what the future has ahead. So Jacob, if you could bring up the presentation. So it's, this is what, just so I can, one of the things I want to share with you is, this slide has been the entry slide to every presentation I've given over the last couple of weeks. It's something that, that I heard from the board, it's something that resonated with me, and it's something that I think is very appropriate for this period of time. And so, as you can imagine, there are many priorities, but those priorities have been communicated to me very clearly, and I very much agree with them. And so, as we've said before, the priorities over the next six months will continue to be special education, teacher-staff morale, budget, multilingual education, startup of the 2022 Bond Program, Mendez Middle School, LRP and the Equity Audit, executive-level staffing, as well as community and family engagement. And I can tell you with great certainty that the work has begun in many, in all of those fronts. Regarding special education, we've had time with the leadership team. We've examined the systemic issues and identified the initial path to recover from the challenging position that we're in. We have scheduled foundational trainings with all of our AISD school teams. We've scheduled training for leadership in special education, and have begun on action plans around special education. The other thing I'd also like to communicate is that we have re-engaged with Dr. Stetson and the leadership team to ensure that they are collaborative partners as we move through this work. Teacher and staff morale, certainly a very important part of the work. You've heard me time and time again talk about removing the pressure from the system, and that has to begin with the work that occurs in the classroom. We've been working with principals, getting feedback from them. We're now going to expand that conversation into the classroom, and the idea is that over time, we can begin to determine what are those things that should come off to create space for that important education to occur. One of the things I can share today is that we are looking at making Assessment 3 optional, which represents three days of testing. We will be presenting a recommendation in the board update later this week, but again, it's one of those small wins that we can provide along the way. And we're also looking at expanding the MAP window in March to extend into April, again, creating more space in the classroom. You've heard me say again also that compensation has to be at the top of the list as we think about moving through the budgeting process with Ed and Brandy leading the work. Compensation is, has to be a focus area for us, and we've heard from our, from our community, we've heard from our staff, we've heard from our educators, that they cannot afford to live in this community, the community that they serve, and if we're not aggressive in this period of time, then I'll look back, and I think we'd all look back at it as though it's a missed opportunity. So that continues to be a focus for us, and you'll see more of that and that intentionality as we work through the budgeting process. Multilingual education, I've had the opportunity to spend some time with the team. I was excited to participate in the, in the Multilingual Education Advisory Committee just a couple of weeks back. We'll be working with the academics team to truly build out that academic vision and have the board provide feedback on that. We actually have an information session item here in the next two months. The 2022 Bond Program, right, such a success in the fall, and it's allowed us to be very well-positioned as we think about compensation, as we think about providing improved spaces for all of our students. That startup is occurring now. The campus architectural teams will be created and well underway in the next two or three weeks. We'll be getting our partners onboard, beginning the designs of these beautiful campuses alongside our community, and I expect to have significant milestones be hit over the course of the summer and into the fall. We have a significant amount of work, and that will really help improve our trajectory as an organization. Mendez Middle School, I was very excited about the opportunity to Mendez Middle School, I was very excited about the opportunity to visit Mendez Middle School with many of the trustees on the dais here with me. It was a very, it was a great tour, I would say. We learned a lot. We shared a collaborative conversation. We are, I think, creating the foundation for a partnership that will certainly position our students very well for years to come. And then, as we move forward with the long-range planning work and how that will impact our work, not only in the budgeting process, but all processes, that work will come forward to the Board for approval in March. I can tell you that the committees, just recently, as recently as last night, approved the strategies. And so, we're very excited about that work and how that will align with the equity work being led by Dr. Hawley and the assessment, as well as future work tied to the strategic plan. So certainly, all of that coming together. And so, as we think about where we are, we've hit the ground running. There's a lot of work ahead, but we're very excited and very excited to have you all as partners as we work through this. So now, on to celebrations, the fun part of the update. So the one thing I'd like to point out first is the gifted education. I am honored to congratulate Debbie Torres, the Gifted Education Coordinator for K-8, who was presented with the Texas Association of the Gifted and Talented GT Administrator of the Year, awarded at the annual Gift Ed Conference. Debbie has served AISD for 30 years. It's incredible. And has spent the majority of her career working in gifted education as both a teacher and district administrator. Debbie has, was integral in the writing of the recently awarded Federal Jacob K. Javits Grant to improve under-representation in the Gifted and Talented Program in Austin ISD. Debbie is currently pursuing her PhD at Baylor University in the Educational Psychology Gifted and Talented Program, and she strives to better support equity in GT and advanced academics. Debbie will also be recognized next Monday at the TASSA Midwinter Conference. So again, congratulations, Debbie. Very excited about that. Equalize Grant at Overton Elementary. I want to congratulate the Equalize Ambassador, Tina Koba, and Overton Elementary for receiving the first Austin ISD Eco Audit Grant of the school year. This grant will be utilized to install a pond to sustain a revitalized, sustain and revitalize their pollinator garden with the intent to make it a vibrant, biodiverse habitat and an inviting public space. Soul Raiders at Battle of the Bands. My first accolade I'd like to talk about is the Soul Raiders, who were awarded the first-place grant champion in the large band divisions. This was at the Third Annual West Orange Stark Mustang Class Battle of the Bands. Congratulations, Soul Raiders, for your season of excellence. Keeling Middle School, National Junior Honor Society Book Drive. I also want to shout out to the National Junior Honor Society at Keeling Middle School for their partnership with the local nonprofit Book Spring. In this, Keeling conducted a book drive to gather and donate 478 books for kids. These young philanthropists showed what it means to care deeply about literacy while also caring deeply about giving to others. Thank you all at Keeling Middle School for the work that you do. Moving on to the Exhibit of School Architecture Awards, 2017 Bond Program. Every year, the Texas Association of School Administrators, sorry, TASSA, and Texas Association of School Boards, TASB, names a number of projects to receive the Calladell Class Award, the highest honor for architecture available from these institutions. Austin's ISD Cassis Elementary School was noted for its ratings in categories of innovation, community planning, and transformation. Cassis Elementary School was recognized at the 2023 TASSA Midwinter Conference as a campus whose progressive concepts continue to influence school design. I will be there on behalf of AISD to receive that award, and so we're very excited about that. And again, just a great space. And I'd also note, not the first award that our campuses have won, just the one this year for 2023. Moving on, Aikens Correctional Services Internship. Next, I'd like to give a shout out to the Aikens Correctional Services Internship Team, who scored extremely high at the TPSA Regional Criminal Justice Competition. While several students earned multiple medals at the contest, all seven students earned first place in at least one event. Wonderful job, team. Way to represent AISD so successfully. You can see a picture of them on the screen. Lunar New Year Celebrations. I would also like to wish everyone a belated Happy Lunar New Year. The Lunar New Year is celebrated by several eastern countries such as China, South Korea, Vietnam, and goes by many different regional names. This holiday signifies the start of a new year on the lunar solar calendar and honors many ancestors and heavenly deities. As you can see, many Austin ISD campuses took the opportunity to simultaneously celebrate and educate their students on the topic. All over the district's schools commemorated in different ways, from paper-cut art and symbols to watching the celebrations happen in eastern countries live online. All of this to learn about the significant holiday that is observed by 2 billion people worldwide. If this puts the desire to celebrate the Lunar New Year in you, it's not too late. Johnson Elementary School is hosting a celebration on Friday, that's tomorrow, January 27th from 5:15 to 6:15. And Summit Elementary School is hosting a show on Friday from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And for those of you wondering, we are in the year of the rabbit. My watch on that day, like, had a rabbit on it, and I didn't understand why, and so I learned a lot. Austin ISD is also observing Holocaust Week, Remembrance Week. This week, AISD is observing Holocaust Remembrance Week in conjunction with the Willsted Reads Project, a national effort led by the Anti-Defamation League, USA Shoah Foundation, and Discovery Education. Our Humanities Department provided lessons on the Holocaust and genocide for middle school and high school students. Additionally, secondary teachers were also encouraged to explore Holocaust curriculum created for students by one of their own AISD students, Gabby Kaplan, as part of her Girl Scout Service Award project. Kaplan developed this unit as a middle schooler and raised money to purchase the readings to support her unit. Books such as Children of Wilstein Lane and Odette's Secrets, Survival in Auschwitz, and Night are now all available in our middle and high school libraries, thanks to her initiative and dedication. And with that, my interim Superintendent Update is now complete, my first one is now complete.
Very good. Good job, Mr. Segura. All right, well, thank you. Trustees, are there any questions or comments? Yes, Dr. Kaufman.
I just want to thank interim Superintendent Segura for that report. A lot of great stuff in there. I do just want to take privilege to recognize the Lunar New Year celebrations as well. I appreciate that you highlighted those. I had the pleasure of attending the debt celebration this morning at Summit Elementary School. Was overwhelmed by the talent and enthusiasm of staff and students and families, and the showcasing of Vietnamese traditions. And I do want to clarify that for the Vietnamese community only, this is the year of the cat. That every other Asian, like Zodiac, has the rabbit, but this year, it's the cat for the Vietnamese community. Programs like these that celebrate various cultures and traditions highlight the power of racially, ethnically, and linguistically diverse school communities that engage in culturally responsive instructional practices. Of course, it's not enough to simply celebrate holidays. We need a curriculum, instruction, staff, and school environments that value students' identities that helps students develop cross-cultural appreciation and proficiency. In 1988, Emily Style introduced the concept of curriculum as window and mirror, in which she says that all curricula should provide mirrors for students in which they can see themselves reflected, and windows through which they can look into the lives and stories of people who are different. And I want to specifically recognize the role that two-way dual-language programs play in this important work by bringing together students to learn content and develop bilingualism in two languages. In AIC, we have Vietnamese and English, we have Chinese Mandarin and English, and we have Spanish and English programs. We need to continue strengthening these programs and ensuring equitable access to them, but also ensuring that all schools are equipped, with or without dual language, to provide windows and mirrors for all students at every campus, including not limited to our Black, Indigenous, Asian-American, Arab-American, Latino, and LGBTQ communities. But thank you for highlighting the Lunar New Year, and I look forward to celebrating many other cultures and groups as we proceed through this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Kaufman. I do have one, one thing I wanted to add. Dr. Reach, do you mind putting that slide back up of our priorities? So this, I want to just share a little bit about how we came up with this. The Board actually spent probably about two hours, you know, with a little posted exercise and organizing things and really digging into what we wanted to focus on. And there's one thing that I would probably maybe add to the top of that, because you might wonder, well, why isn't academic achievement listed on the list of priorities? Or why isn't student mental health on there? That is, all these bullet points are ways to get to that. Our number-one goal in this district is student achievement and well-being. And so, I want to be very clear that all these bullets here would feed into that ultimate goal. We didn't forget about that. But these are all the different factors, you know, looking at our Board adopted values. We really wanted to make sure we were reflecting what we've learned over the last year in our Board monitoring reports and scorecard reports, as well as what we've been hearing from our community. So, thank you. Oh, yes.
As I listen to our priorities and on the item of morale, staff morale, one thing that I don't recall us talking about, and it was brought to my attention this week as I'm visiting campuses, is that it is going to be very helpful that we look at, you know, what do we take away off their plate, but also the safety of our teachers. And I was reminded by that teacher that was shot by the sixth grader. I mean, yeah, the six-year-old, I'm sorry. And so, there has been, and I'd like us to get a report of how many of our campuses are having multiple fights with students in there, and that's really affecting our teachers. So the safety of our teachers is part of the morale. And so, I'd like us to figure out how we include that now, because we could lose more teachers. And so, I don't remember us talking about their safety. So, but I think it's critical that that's something that should be a priority and how we can begin looking at that now. Thank you.
So, Tricia Sabata, I will work with the team to develop some information. I will tell you, however, you know, for us as an organization, safety and for our students and staff is a top priority. We are doing a variety of things and have been doing a variety of things. We probably need to talk about them more and be kind of just real transparent about all the different strategies that we're employing to ensure that our students and staff are safe. But I'll pull that information together and get that to the Board.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other comments from trustees? All right. So we will now move to the public testimony for items on the consent agenda. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public testimony portion of our meeting called a dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to sign up to speak in person or to audio-record their remarks. And tonight, we have one person signed up to speak in person, and we have one who left a recorded message. So we'll move into the in-person testimony. In order to provide as many, and so you'll have one minute. And callers who signed up to speak in person are welcome to come to the microphone when their name is called. There is, and when you come up, there is a device that will light up as you move through your one minute of allotted time. When the buzzer sounds, please make a final thought in one sentence. Again, we ask that whether you came to give a complaint or praise, that if you reference a staff member by position or by abbreviated last name. We ask that all audience members, whether speaking or not, please show respect for others at all times. Our in-person speaker is Perla Munoz Hopkins. So, please come up. Thank you.
Buenos tardes. My name is Perla Munoz Hopkins, and thank you, Board of Trustees, interim Superintendent Mr. Segura, for accommodating community engagement on your consent agenda number 12.1 and Agenda Item Number 13, as you deliberate on a very important topic, which is celebrating the history of AISD and making sure that our facilities, you know, and the district offer the best opportunities for all students. So with that being said, it's not a complaint. It's actually great, wonderful news. We have a donation for you all, starting with, you know, Agenda Item 12.1 for Manchaca Elementary School. But it's actually for all of the schools in AISD and all of the school buildings. Education, can, may I finish, or?
You can finish in one sentence, please.
Education Code 1.004 is the display of our national motto in all of the Texas public schools and colleges, as long as they're donated. So on behalf of the National Motto Project, and parents, and grandparents, and citizens, like myself from Travis County, we start off by offering 300 framed, our National Motto Project, "In God, We Trust" frames. And Mr. Segura, I would just need to make a connection with your facilities director and go from there. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you all so much for what you do for our children. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. We will now play a recorded message for public, the recorded message for public testimony, so please listen carefully.
This is Sharon Vane, parent of a Bowie junior and a 2022 AISD graduate. I'm calling about Agenda Item 15.1. This is a follow-up into my call to this month's Information Session when I expressed concern that Yom Kippur, the holiest day in the Jewish calendar, was also designated as the Elementary Parent Teacher Conference Day. I am assuming, based on the subsequent phone conversation I had with, that an alternate conference day will be offered, but there's no indication in the Board docs that that is the case. I want to make sure the Board hears that proactive communication is essential in this arena. Jewish parents' concerns over repeated schedule conflicts are what led to the district's establishment of the inclusion calendar. Having the district acknowledge upfront the conflict and provide a solution is so important so that Jewish parents do not feel the onus is on them once more to organize alternate dates. A single line in this proposal, an alternate conference date will be offered for Jewish families, would go a long way, and I cannot stress enough that any public communication about these calendar changes should include this information. Thank you so much.
This concludes public testimony. Trustees, are there any questions or clarifications? Yes, Trustee Hunter.
Good evening. I wanted to ask the interim Superintendent, the alternative day for Yom Kippur. It's High Holy Day. Have we come up with that date yet so that we can get that out to parents?
Jacob Reach will be able to provide input. Trustee Hunter.
Thank you, Trustee Hunter, and to our parent who called in to highlight it. And my apologies for not including more information in our agenda item, which I think would have been helpful for our families to understand those options. So we do want to be proactive in letting our families know that for anyone who has, either for religious or personal reasons, would not be able to take part in a parent conference day on that day, that we will provide alternative dates such as another time that week or during our November Student Holiday and Staff Work Day, so that we can make sure that we accommodate that. And I was just discussing with Mr. Hicks, so that we are confirming that this is something that we will do proactively upfront. We won't wait for the day and for families to come to us and tell us, oh, I have a conflict on that day. We will be proactive in getting that messaging out to them ahead of time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Secretary Boswell.
Dr. Reach, sorry, I almost caught you before you sat down. Would it be possible to add that language to the calendar itself, since we're referencing the holiday there on that date?
Definitely. So on the calendar that we will be posting on our Austin ISD website and sending out to our families, we will make sure that it references that that is our elementary Conference Day and Secondary Professional Development Day, and that for those families, for personal or religious reasons, need an alternative, that that will be provided. And then, we'll make sure that also when we do our messaging out to campuses and to families that we have a new calendar for next year, that that's included in those stories as well.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Yes, Trustee Kaufman.
Could I just ask what provisions we would have in place for employees who celebrate Yom Kippur and would like to celebrate that day with their families, rather than be holding the parent conferences on that day?
Yeah. And so, one of the things that we discuss when looking at this calendar is how we work around the teacher contract days, recognizing that teachers do have a number of contract days that they need to meet. days that they need to meet. And so what we discussed is that as a professional development day, staff are not only encouraged by AISD, but also understandably protected in law to take off for their religious holidays. So we want to be supportive of our staff who want to do that. For this calendar, it would still be a workday because of the need to make sure we're meeting those staff contract days in the future and with the calendar committee that we want to put together, which people can apply for on our advisory body website, and we will start back up in September. We want to have that discussion to see if there is that ability to look at how we can move even further along to holidays for students and staff.
And I just want to thank the administration for providing, to return to the calendar committee, genuinely representing voices of community and staff in setting the calendar for the year. So I appreciate that you're starting early and that you're, you know, committing to that engagement to make sure that we really take all voices into consideration. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you. We will now move to the consent agenda. By the way, I want to let you all know that the administration has pulled item 13.2, clarification of the board authorization for the 2022 bond program, and will bring this item back at the February meetings. The administration wants to ensure the board and public that this will not delay any modernization projects for the 2022 bond program. So trustees, are there any consent items anyone would like to pull for separate vote? Okay. All right. Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes. I move to approve agenda items, let's see, agenda, motion to approve the consent agenda, yes. Agenda items 9.1, 10.1 through 10.9, 11.1 through 11.8, 12.1, 13.1 through 13.2, 14.1 through 14.4, and 15.1.
Great. Is there a second?
Actually, there needs to be an amendment to the motion.
Thank you.
Yes.
Oh, that's, okay. Would you like to make the amendment to the motion?
I would like to move that we amend the motion by removing consent agenda item 13.2.
Okay. Do we need a second for that? Okay. Is there a second? Okay, Trustee Sabata, second. So there is a motion to remove item 13.2, as mentioned earlier in the discussion, and seconded by Trustee Sabata. So we vote? Okay, so all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, the motion, the amendment, the motion to amend passes unanimously. And so now, I will ask if there is any discussion on, oh, on the amended motion. Okay. So I believe, having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Sabata, right, to approve consent items, let's see, 9.1, 10.1 through 10.9, 11.1 through 11.8, 12.1, 13.1, 14.1 through 14.4, and 15.1. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Great. The motion passes unanimously. All right. We will now-
May I take a brief point of privilege on the calendar? A very fun calendar item. One of our school days in the 2023-2024 school year is a total solar eclipse. I see Ms. Petrazini laughing about this. I have talked about it a few times. It's going to be an amazing opportunity for our students in the middle of a school day on a Monday to see the sky get dark, the sun to be completely eclipsed. Stars will come out, and the sun, depending on where you are in Austin, will be completely dark for up to a few minutes, and I've shared it. And in terms of, Trustee Segura, I have to say, I appreciate so much that you are seeing this as a learning opportunity, an opportunity for wonder and discovery, and some of the AISD joy people have been talking about, and making sure that our students, this is a meaningful experience for our students. So I really just want to thank you for working with your team to figure out how we do that for our kids. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let's see. Oh, yes. We will now move to those items that, hold on, that were, have been pulled from the agenda for separate vote, and that is item 16.1. So, Trustee Boswell, do we have a motion?
Yes, I move to approve item 16.1.
Thank you.
Approval of the executive search firm.
Thank you. Trustees, are there any questions or, wait, do we need a second for that? We do, right? Okay. Do we have a second? Second. Okay. So we have a motion by Trustee Boswell and a second by Trustee Lugo, and is there any discussion on this? Yes, I think we ought to. Thank you. Trustee Lugo, were you going to?
Yes. Thank you, President Singh. So I would like to share a little of what I considered as we went through this process of reviewing proposals and then ultimately making our selection. And of course, I invite the other review committee members to share if they wish to do so. So for AISD admin, y'all know I love procurement, seriously. And I was really honored to be part of this process, to put in place a review process with integrity that really looked at all angles, not just cost, not just, you know, what's on the paper, but really take the time to develop questions that would help us find the right search firm, who then in turn will help us find the right permanent superintendent. So a few things that I considered, of course, first and foremost, you know, what is the firm's ability to work with the board and the administration and the community to carry out an open, transparent search, which in Texas is not, in Texas, it is atypical to do that. Surprisingly, in Florida, it is standard sunshine laws. So interesting. So we do want to have an open and transparent search, one that's really grounded in ensuring that the candidates who are attracted to this particular position want to stay here, see us for who we are, warts and all, right? We're highly engaged. We have strong opinions, not just us on the dais, but our families, our staff, our community. And so that was one of the first and foremost things that I thought about. And the other was kind of why I started off my earlier comments, like, well, why a search firm, right? Because I always think about, you know, how do public entities spend public dollars? Are those being spent wisely? Is it necessary? And I do truly believe that the process of finding a search firm to help us and find the right candidates is necessary and is in the public interest. And then the third thing that I considered was kind of like the full package, right? What's on paper? How flexible were each of the firms in responding to our questions, questions around community engagement, questions around transparency? And also, how can we, as trustees, be involved in each of those steps at the right level and at the right time? So it was not an easy decision. Thankfully, we had really strong proposals and really great, very competitive firms. And like I said, I invite the other members to share comments if they wish to do so.
Trustee Hunter.
Thank you. Like Trustee Lugo mentioned, it was a very, I don't know, it was an exercise in critical thinking. We really had talked to a few people when we were going, working with the interim. We had also asked people what they wanted when it came to permanent, and those things were in my mind when we were looking for the search firm. As Trustee Lugo mentioned also, there's, we have, you know, a fiduciary responsibility to our district, we have a balanced budget, we want to use our money wisely, and in choosing a search firm, we realized that we have to, the question, the one thing that I was like, we have to get this right. We have to get it right for our community. And some of the questions that I asked about often with the different firms was, how do you engage with the community? Austin is very different, and for those people who have not been here, as Trustee Lugo mentioned also, our parents are engaged across the spectrum of socioeconomic wherewithal, across the social spectrum, racial, we're very diverse. So first, I wanted someone who could communicate, because our community does not want to be dictated to. They want to tell you, and that's what we're here, we want to listen. So we definitely wanted that. And then also, we wanted someone when it came to translations. So like, we have many different languages, and we want to meet people where they are, and that was one of the things we asked for. And then finally, for me, and considering the search firm was just, where are we looking for this talent? We know the skill set that we need in a permanent superintendent, and we really want people that have a far reach, whether that's close or far, but I guess the word I'm looking for is a deep reach, to find that talent and that skill set that matches with Austin, someone who will come and not try to change us, but someone who wants to be part of us. And that's what, you know, and we'll have an opportunity for everybody to share with that search firm, and so, you know, be present in that, because we're doing that so that we make sure, right, we get it right. That's what's important, that we get it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you. So nice you had to say it twice. So I really just want to speak from my own personal perspective, or what I was looking for is I engage with my fellow trustees on the work of this subcommittee, and then also why I feel like we're making a good recommendation to the rest of the board. So what I personally looked for in a superintendent search firm was a firm that could demonstrate their capacity to, yes, provide community engagement, like Trustee Lugo and Trustee Hunter said, but I was looking at it in very specific ways and in stages, really. So first, when we talk about the development of the profile, I wanted a firm that could, had a demonstrated capacity to lead in the development of that profile, not only with us as individual members of the board, but also with community organizations like the ACPTA and other community groups that I know, based on my conversations, are already doing this. They're very excited to engage in this process, and they themselves are beginning to develop a list of characteristics that they want to see in a superintendent. So what is the profile of the person that we're out to get? And I also wanted, not only for a firm to show that they could engage groups like the ACPTA, but also all of our parents, right, and all of our students and all of the different groups that comprise our school staff. And one of the other trustees said it, and I don't remember who, so I don't want to misattribute, but not to bring people to the table, but to effectively take the table out into the community and to solicit feedback from what is the profile that you want. I wanted a firm that could also show that they could engage organizations beyond those that are the most directly involved in our schools, organizations like the chamber, neighborhood associations, and other civic groups, and really to engage with them and to hone in on what is it that they want to see in our next permanent superintendent, to post that profile, to get feedback from the public on the profile that they collect, you know, or that they comprise using all that data that they've collected. And I also want to say that I know, as an individual, that not every district, although some in other states do, engage in an open process, particularly in our state, because it's not required. But I also think that most districts are not like Austin, and I think that we owe it to our next superintendent to start them off on the correct foot with this community, and that our community needs to feel through this process that their opinions are validated, that they're accounted for, and that there's an expectation that we're going to use that feedback in a meaningful way. So that is what I wanted, and I feel confident in the process that we engaged in, that we've selected a firm that can do all or some of those things. I understand that I'm one of nine individuals, and so what I just described might not be where my fellow trustees want us to do, but I believe that we have a firm that could do significant portions of that. So that is why I feel comfortable recommending this particular firm to the board.
Thank you, Trustee Gonzalez. Anyone else? Secretary Boswell.
Thank you all for those comments. I agree with everything that my colleagues on the board and the committee have shared, and really appreciate the chance to do this work with all of you. A lot was done, and all the way until Monday, after we had met several times and were honing in, when Dr. Reach and I called, references. Dr. Reach called administrators, I called people who had been trustees and community members, and really appreciate the chance that we all chose to really go deep, really looking for a firm not to do this for us, but to do this with us. And with us, meaning our entire community. We know what Austin needs, and we know what's going to get us the best result when we really do go out and do that deep work of engagement that you're talking about, and go out into the community, and really appreciated hearing the way that the firms would work with us to make this our process right for us, that it's not a one-size-fits-all. And then appreciated the chance to know how the firms would tap into what really is not a limitless pool of talent. There are really strong people out there, but there are not, there is not a glut of really strong people out there, and there are a lot of people looking for superintendents. And that piece of the work to take what we create, translate it into communication with possible candidates, to getting people to apply, a list that we can create within our community and a list of people we don't know yet, who they can help us find, is extraordinarily important. And, you know, what we're doing tonight is choosing a firm, and what we have to call on our whole community to do and ourselves to do, is make sure that we use the firm wisely and well to get all that feedback at every step of the process. And I do appreciate the willingness to consider doing it differently and exactly what that might look like here, and feel like we're putting someone forward who's ready to go there with us and has experience doing that in other places. So, thank you.
Yes, Trustee Lugo.
So I do want to add one more thing. So do we get to announce the person right now?
Let's do.
We're all waiting.
On the edge of our seats. So we've, the committee recommends GR recruiting. Now, one of the things that I love about Austin, and one of the things that, in fact, got me more involved in the school district, as some of you all know, is we love to Google. We love to look on the internet and find out, let me find out more about these folks. So GR recruiting, for those of, for those in the public who may already be Googling, GR recruiting does include some of the same folks that were involved in the superintendent search that took place years ago and then resulted in, at that time, superintendent, interim superintendent Paul Cruz becoming the permanent superintendent. And so I just thought it would be important to call that out as something that, I hope it's okay to say this, but like, the committee weighed lots of factors, including which firm is going to be the best fit. And a couple of things that I also want to point out is that if you look at the board members today, not, we bring a level of diversity that I think is really historic. I don't think there's ever been, and I hope there will continue to be a board as diverse as the one that you see here. And along with that, please know that we're not looking to repeat history. We are looking to do this process right, find the right candidate. And with that, one of the reasons why I do love procurement so much, is that it really comes down to what's in the scope of work, what's in the contract.
The board will be working with that firm. So it, again, hold us accountable, reach out to us. But I do truly believe that this search process will be one of the best processes this district has seen.
Thank you, Trustee Lugo. Anyone else? It's okay. That's why you're here, Trustee Kaufman. Go.
So I did not serve on the committee that made this selection, but I had 100% confidence in their recommendation. And so I want to express my gratitude to those members of the committee who spent countless hours doing this and also to the district staff who supported it because procurement is a very labor-intensive process. So a lot of people had their hands on this. I want to also just express gratitude to the previous board for leaving this decision to the newly elected board so that the superintendent that we hire, so that the board that hires the superintendent is the board that works with and supervises the superintendent. I think that was a very gracious and smart move on behalf of our, on our previous board. I also just want to acknowledge what I think I've heard from some people, which is that using a search firm does not guarantee that we make the right decision. And so really, the hard work comes now with asking the right questions, with listening intently to all of the stakeholders. I really appreciate what our, my colleague said and especially what Trustee Gonzalez said about really taking the table out there and making sure that we're reaching into the most marginalized communities and those people whose voices we don't typically hear, in addition to those voices that are most organized and most vocal. I think that's extremely important. But then I just want to just say now, what I will probably say six months from now again, which is that we need to do our job as a board of not only hiring the right superintendent, but then holding the new superintendent accountable for pursuing AISD's vision and for upholding AISD's values. And then to hold ourselves accountable for providing the support and supervision to that superintendent to do that work. And so this is like step one, but the hard work now is really making sure that we are listening and asking the right questions. And then the hardest work is going to be when we really partner with them and take this district to new heights. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Kaufman. I have to mention, I just did a quick search in my Gmail and there is not one, not two, but three emails from a certain Oli to Lugo in 2020 with all sorts of input and ideas about the search form. And I just think it's just such a full circle moment to see you here now cheering this committee. So thank you. All right, Trustee Foster. Okay. All right. So having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Lugo, correct? Okay. To approve Item 16.1, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Trustee Sapata, okay. All right, those opposed, please raise your right hand. Those abstaining. Okay. The motion passes with, the motion passes with eight in favor, zero opposed, and one abstaining. So congratulations to GR recruiting. And we will now recess the open meeting at 7:16 PM and move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, and 551.071. For our viewers at home, this concludes our live broadcast. And when we are finished with the executive session, we will briefly return to open session to formally adjourn the meeting. The adjournment will be recorded and be included in all replays of tonight's meeting. So thank you so much for joining us. Thank you for all of our goodies for Board Appreciation Month. And have a wonderful evening. Okay, we will now reconvene the open meeting at 1:25 AM. Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Hunter to adjourn. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. The meeting is adjourned at 1:26 AM. Thank you.